To introduce my pastor tonight, Pastor Alan McMillan at Lighthouse Church in Kingsport, Tennessee.
Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Can we bow our heads please? Heavenly Father, we are grateful for your blessings as we gather here this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. As we come together to discuss the matters at hand, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. May our hearts be open to collaboration and our minds be focused on the well-being of those that this body represents. Help us to listen with compassion and speak with integrity. Grant us the strength to make decisions that reflect the needs of our community and foster unity among its members. Father, as we embark on our discussions, let us remember our shared goals and the importance of our service. May our actions contribute to a bright future for everyone involved in that we serve. Let us serve with a heart of thanksgiving and gratitude. We ask all of these things in the name that is above every other name, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. It's with great honor that I recognize Lieutenant Colonel Richmond, Westridge High School ROTC, for our presentation of colors.
Forward, march! Color down. Oh. Right. Ace. Harry. August. Go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. August. Left. Ace. Forward. March!
Has every member recorded their presence? Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two present, one accent, one seat vacant.
Thank you Madam Clerk. We have a quorum. The November two thousand twenty-five meeting of Sullivan County Commission is in session. And you'll see under our presentation proclamations, the first two are actually resolution specific. So one and two, when, when their specific resolution comes up on the calendar, I'll ask them to come up for their presentation. Our first order is proclamation recognizing Oasis of Kingsport for outstanding community service. So anyone here from Oasis, if you will, meet me at the, meet me at the front. Is it on? You've got a green light. Or I can use this one. I can use this one here. Can you hear me? I'll just use this one. It's all fine. I have the privilege of presenting this to Chantel Amanda Vogel. Proclamation and recognition of Oasis of Kingsport for outstanding community service. For as the Oasis of Kingsport is a faith-centered organization dedicated to uplifting women of all ages and backgrounds through encouragement, education, and fellowship. The mission of the Oasis of Kingsport is to encourage and equip women of all ages and demographics to faith-centered support, education, and fellowship, setting an atmosphere of encouragement, personal growth, and overall transformation. Through its commitment to spiritual and personal development, the Oasis of Kingsport provides a nurturing environment where women can discover their purpose, strengthen their faith, and build meaningful connections that enrich both individual lives and the broader community. The organization stands as a beacon of hope and empowerment, fostering growth, confidence, and unity among women across Kingsport and beyond. The vision and dedication of the Oasis of Kingsport reflect the highest ideals of service, compassion, and faith in action. On behalf of Sullivan County Mayor Richard Venable and Board of County Commissioners, take a great deal of pleasure in presenting this to Ms. Vogel, and you have the floor. They're all yours. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. It's a very much an honor to be here and receive this. I, I actually, at once, for a loss for words, really. The Oasis of Kingsport has been serving the women of our community since two thousand fourteen, and I have had the great honor of heading up its senior, being a senior pastor there for, for the women, and also being the executive director for the last ten years. So I am very honored that I get to serve the women of our community, and I get to see change take place in their lives. A large amount of the women that we do serve are part of the homeless community there in Kingsport. We also serve a large amount of demographic of women that are in our low-income community as well. And we provide classes and programs that promote self-sufficiency and teach skills. So we have cooking classes, things like that. And what our goal is, is to take someone who may not have the skills to succeed in life and get them where they need to go. And recently, one of our success stories was featured in Kingsport by, by the mayor in Kingsport, Mayor Paul Montgomery. And her name is Cheyenne, and we're very proud of her. She is at ETSU. She gained her, her degree while living on the street of Kingsport, coming to Oasis and working on her associate's degree. She, we, we have the great honor of attending the graduation at Northeast State as she walked across the stage. And we have had the great honor of helping her to get to ETSU. And she is right now living on campus at ETSU. She went from staying on the street with her family at, around the library there in Kingsport, near the Gissing Bow, sleeping there, coming to Oasis, doing her homework, to now living on campus at ETSU, working on her bachelor's degree. That's just one of the many success stories that we have, and it is an honor to serve our community and serve the women of our community. If we can build strong women, we can build strong families, we can build strong children. And that's what we're trying to do here in Sullivan County and the Kingsport area. So thank you so very much for giving me and our organization such an incredible honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order, I'd like to recognize Barbara Streep, Tennessee Historic Commission. You're ready.
And I'll ask someone, would they?
Sure. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for inviting us. It's a pleasure to be here. I think all of you, because you serve on this board and you work so hard, you love Sullivan County, and I love the history of Sullivan County. It is something to be proud of because we were the beginning of Tennessee. I am on their board. I'm also on the Tennessee State Commission Board down in Nashville. And I also am a DAR. I don't know how many DAR ladies we have with us tonight, one that I know of. And I also am a First Families of Tennessee. Down again, Frostbottom, Tennessee was my family. When I started doing research and looking and everything, I was afraid, honestly, of what I would find. But what I did find is that I thought Frostbottom was always Frostbottom because it frosted there first. But it was a relative of mine, and so Makaya Frost is my relative. This is why I am so interested in East Tennessee, and this is why I'm so interested in Sullivan County. We have so much to be proud of. And Rocky Mount, I was so excited when I got asked to be on their board. Our mission statement, and I won't tell you what it is verbatim, but I'll tell you what we do. We try to educate as many people as we can about our heritage and how we got here and why we stayed here and why we were the capital when we weren't even the state of Tennessee. We also try, we have a lot of schoolchildren to go through, and Cody, the director of Rocky Mount, he's the number guys. So he's been crunching numbers for us to tell us how many people we have. But you know, what we really want is to be part of Sullivan County as you tell your story, and we're ready already at Rocky Mount for our two hundred fiftieth celebration. You've all seen it, about it, you've heard about it. It is a big deal. Our whole nation, I think, I think it's going to change how we feel about our country and how proud we are of, of our country. We, you have our agenda event, and the thing that I got to do, Cody's very user-friendly as, as the director. We will have two-day event on June the thirteenth and the fourteenth. And the fourteenth is the day that we are going to have, we're having a new flagpole with Betsy Ross's flag, and I'm sure you guys have got them ordered somewhere because everybody's going to be flying. And then we will have the flag. We're also doing a partnership with Appalachian Literacy Initiative. This group of people gives out so many books, and they're more like third, fourth, fifth graders. Now Dolly has a program of giving out books, but think about that child that lives and doesn't have, doesn't get taken to the library, or the child that doesn't get to have a book. They get to go pick out the book through Appalachian Literacy Initiative. What we're going to do with them is we're going to have a historical walking trail of someone that is, that they've read about or they know about. And what they do is they walk different places. There's one at Steel Creek, and they'll get to read the story and walk about a half a mile. So we want to give them some exercise and we want them to read. And at the same time, we're doing a new room at Rocky Mount that what's out on the kiosk and the children are reading is the same thing that's going to be in a big room for their activities and for them to do. We also are going to have on June the fourteenth, which is Flag Day, we'll raise the Betsy Ross flag, but we'll also have a tea for Betsy. That seems very simple, but we're going to have reenactors, and those reenactors will be Betsy and George Washington. We're looking for a good George Washington, by the way. He will drop by and he will ask her to make a flag, and then we learn the story of her making the flag and, and what we're doing. So we're looking forward to a big seller celebration for two fifty, and we want to be part of, of Sullivan County and what you need or what you want, let us help you with it. We're real good at having parties and educational events. Rock, Cody?
So, thank you. Commissioner Streep, um, so folks, uh, here's the deal, you know, I want to set the stage for you real fast because here's the thing, I've, I've been at Rocky Mount for six years now, and, you know, also to the public too, this is one of the things that I, I'm talking to you guys behind me, but here's, here's the deal. I was a marketing professor at King for a while. I was never a history person, but when coming to Rocky Mount, one thing I realized, if you don't claim your history, no one else is going to do that for you. So working at Rocky Mount, I have realized Sullivan County, your history is so, so important, and the significance you have to Tennessee's history is really, really fundamental. So that all being said, so many people, you all may have went to Rocky Mount as a child, a lot of people I haven't, you know, that don't come back to Rocky Mount after that, but that being said, that doesn't take away from its importance. And I thought I would, I had just this one little two-minute thing I thought I would read to you, just to kind of talk about how Rocky Mount is. And the thing about this is, we have to go all the way back to when we actually were ruled by a king. And I talk to school kids about this, and sometimes that's weird to think, strange to think that we used to be ruled by a king. So I'm going to read this very off verbatim because in the history world, if I get a date wrong, and this is being recorded, I, I will definitely get an email about that. So in the late seventeen hundreds, men and women crossed across the Appalachian Mountains. You remember that back before? They were in North Carolina. So they crossed across the mountains and the wilderness. The King George the Third had forbidden them to actually enter. So we think about this, this land that we're in right now, King George did not want us here. So the people that came, they came anyways. They claimed these mountains, built cabins, built homes, raised families, and they carved out of life what the crown said was not theirs for the taking. When Revolutionary War ignited, years later, King George learned about how these colonists in this area had settled in these forbidden mountains. He was not very happy about this. He thought these people were very defiant, these people that had crossed into these mountains. So the Battle of Kings Mountain in seventeen eighty, this was a turning point in the Revolutionary War. The families right at Rocky Mount, just a few miles down the road, they helped supply the overmountain men with arms, ammunition, and gunpowder. They didn't just watch history happen, they made it happen. So decades later, the Revolutionary, uh, the revolution won, and a new nation was taking shape. And there's this guy that's, I think we all think is pretty important. George Washington sent his friend, William Blunt, down to govern this area, the frontier. From seventeen ninety to seventeen ninety-two, Rocky Mount served, right there, as the capital of the Southwest Territory from seventeen ninety to seventeen ninety-two, carrying the full authority of the U.S. Constitution across the mountains for the very first time. At the homestead right down, a few miles right down the road, Governor Blunt negotiated treaties, managed territorial affairs, and laid the groundwork for what Tennessee statehood would be. So right down the road isn't just a historical homestead, it's where our brave ancestors in early Tennessee helped shape the nation, and it's where the frontier rose and became the state of Tennessee. So why, why is this so important? It's because this is the foundation of Tennessee, started on this side of Tennessee, in Sullivan County, not in Knox, not in Knoxville, not in Nashville. It was right here, and that's why your history is so, so important because you all have the foundation of Tennessee right here in your back door. So if we'll go to the next slide, I just have a few here. "After Governor Blunt arrived here, Rocky Mount," this is the letter he sent out. And you can tell the Cobb family that he stayed with, they were, they treated him with a lot of accommodations. "So I arrived in this country and was received very, every mark of attention and gladness that I could have wished, and I am very well accommodated with a glass, windows, fireplace, and everything at this place." You've got to think, folks, this is seventeen nineties. The, they had, this was the wilderness, they had glass. Uh, the glass would have been brought down from New York. This was a really, um, interesting time of Tennessee's history. We'll go to the next slide here. So what is Rocky Mount today? And you know Barbara was just talking about this, but Rocky Mount today, we'll go to the next slide, it's an education center. It's a fifty-acre historic site that is known for being the beginnings of Tennessee. But what is it now? Well, right now it's an education center where we connect people to early days of Tennessee history, from living history and interpretation. Not only that, we have fifty acres, but we have historic animals such as our causewell sheep that connect people back to that time period that they would have had back in George Washington's time period. We also have festivals, and we also just have walking trails and different things that people can do. We'll go to the next slide here. Just a few years ago, the oldest working farm in Tennessee went up for sale. The Sally the Botman family, that went up for sale after she passed away, Rocky Mount was able to acquire that through a, a lot of generous donations, and one of the individuals that made a big impact in making that happen, probably most of y'all know him, was John McCainy. He was, uh, helped with that. Not only did he help purchase this piece of land, whereas he asked, this, this barn was falling down. This is right next to Rocky Mount, by the way, and it was falling down, and John helped us get eighty percent of that wood replaced and get that barn restored back to its working order. So we go next, the next slide. So Rocky Mount and the numbers. So we, I think Rocky Mount is, we've always been kind of a gateway into Sullivan County. We're people, we are really a, a first stop for a lot of people. So annually, we see about twenty-five thousand people. The school attendance ranges from about fifteen to twenty thousand kids. With COVID, we're still trying to recover from that number. But our digital reach from Facebook and our website, we're reaching about one point five million people impressions and people visiting us every single year. So that all being said, it, why we have so many visitors is because of people trying, coming to see us. Our slogan in Tennessee is, "Our Rocky Mount is Tennessee starts here." Our next slide here is what's up and coming, and the details matter. So right now, uh, the state of Tennessee, um, is, has been in a request for a twelve million dollar visitor center upgrade that's going to be happening in twenty twenty-seven, and that's right here in Sullivan County. The next slide is our big look ahead, and this is everything I just handed out to you all, and things that Barbara was just talking about. We have, I have a lot of different events coming up, and based on the proclamation that Sullivan County just made, uh, a few meetings ago, for Sullivan County Days, uh, and your packet there is something that Rocky Mount would, would like to be a part of, and that's Sullivan County Days. Now, I also, before you guys learn today, uh, I'll have by the door, this is just important for me, for you commissioners, I got you all a book. This is before Tennessee was Tennessee, the Southwest Territory, tells you the whole story of Rocky Mount. I know it's a lot, large, but I want you to have it for your bookshelf. The other thing I gave for you is-
I suggested it.
The other thing is, uh, Rocky Mount is, uh, me and Barbara, she is from the Tennessee, she's a commissioner from the Tennessee State Museum, uh, Rocky Mount is also managed by the Tennessee Historical Commission. I gave you one of their brochures. And Rocky, there's also, um, in here, another good news is, uh, Tennessee has eighteen different historic sites, and I thought I'd give you that. We're different from a, a state park, we're historic sites, we're a little bit different. And also, we make apple butter at Rocky Mount, and I thought I'd give you all one of those.
I didn't make that.
Folks, it's one of those things where, um, you know, I, I, we know, I know a lot of you, but it's one of those things where, uh, we really want to be a part of Sullivan County, because we are a part of Sullivan County. And what we wrote on this thing right here is, this is a marketing term that we just kind of came up with, but what it is, is Tennessee beginning, but what, and right, right at the very top of that, you see what it says, Sullivan County, where Tennessee began. That's the truth. And if you don't claim your history, no one else is going to do it. And Rocky Mount was in Sullivan County, it was not in Washington County. Washington County may be the first county, but this is the county where governance, governance took place, and a lot of the foundational government took place in this county. So, but may, may, may have other claims, y'all have very important claims that y'all can make yourselves about.
We appreciate your time this evening. Do you have any questions for us?
Anyone have any questions?
That we may or may not be able to answer.
Anyone seek recognition? Thank y'all.
I got a question.
Mr. King?
Let me ask you, you showed a, a slide of a farm, it's supposed to be the oldest working farm in the state of Tennessee. You know what time period that was?
You're talking about the barn?
The barn, the red barn.
So, I don't know the, is that, it's two hundred and thirty something, it's, we, I already had the claim established with it when we purchased it, and we just were able to acquire the claim along with it. Now, if you would ask me about something about Rocky Mount, I could have said it right off, but since this is a new acquired property, I don't know all of these, I'll drop in, I'm sorry about that, but I can get it to you.
And the reason I'm asking, our family came here in seventeen seventy-three, and I've got a cousin that just got a dairy farm, and in seventeen eighty, the two sons of John King that came down here in seventeen seventy-three fought in Revolutionary War, and then when they got to come back, they got two land grants here in Sullivan County, and, and it was, it wasn't Sullivan County, it was Washington County, North Carolina.
Yes, it was.
And then, because if you look up deeds or something, if you can find them here in Sullivan County, you got to go to Raleigh, North Carolina to find the deeds-
You do.
-of that land where they get the land grant.
Yes, that's correct. That's, that's how Frostbottom, Tennessee, that I was talking about, that's how they got their property also. They didn't have enough money to pay them to fight in the war, so they promised them land. Correct.
All right, just thank you.
Uh, we appreciate you giving us-
And we have one, we have one more. Commissioner Mains.
Okay. I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I was just at your all's, um, site about a month ago on a field trip, and you all did a fantastic job, and the tour guides knew so much about history, so it was, it was really great, and I just wanted to commend you on that, so thank you.
We appreciate that. We, we do our website in-house, so we can make changes. I don't know, Cody, how fast can you make changes on the website?
On the blog?
Thirty, thirty minutes. Uh, so that, that makes us, makes it very helpful for us, for us to have everything current and, and up to date when we're doing things. So think of us as you do your traveling tourism, and let us be a part of it.
Thank you. Recognize Commissioner Travis Ward for recognition of veteran service officers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always good to come to the web and look at everybody face to face and knock the back of their heads. Take a moment, uh, you know, last week we celebrated Veterans' Day. If you're a veteran, would you stand up, please? Always good to have veterans. My next point would be, got to be a resolution coming real soon, have the Honor Guard and the Flag Month here, and every, wow, is that not cool? You know, we do a lot of resolutions here, and I think sometimes we don't ever get to see the outcome, see how it ended up. A couple of years ago, me and Sam and Gary, Joyce, we sit in these back rooms, and Sam was spearheading this, and we were trying to come up with money, come up with, for a VSO. All these counties had VSOs, Veteran Service Officers, we didn't have any. Proud to say we have three today. Okay, I'm about to introduce Hunter Woodall and Mac Reynolds and Sonya Arnold. Y'all come on up there. What better time to recognize these three folks and what all they do for veterans? I'm going to turn it over to Hunter, because I don't want to mess up some of these numbers, but I just want you to hold on to your seats, because what he's about to tell you is probably going to blow your mind.
Thank you Travis.
Thank you.
Um, I know most of you know me, Hunter Woodall, Veteran Service Officer, I've been here for about five years now, which seems crazy, time flies, but, uh, before I, before I talk and talk about these numbers, I just want to introduce the, the rest of the team. So, um, of course, he said their names there, but this- So, of course, he said their names there, but this is, this is Mac Reynolds. He's our newest VSO. We just hired him. It's almost been a year, which seems crazy, time is flying. He's doing a wonderful job. And then, of course, Sonya Arnold behind me. She, she wears two hats. She's a VSO. She's trained, certified, can do claims, but she's also our administrative assistant. So she takes care of phone calls, emails, fax, all the paperwork that we have to submit in and out each and every day. She's the brains and operation behind that. So, again, these two have been a wonderful asset. When I first started, and it was me and one other lady, and it was pretty rough. We had just started as the PAC Act came into existence, and it was, we were getting our teeth kicked in every single day. And these numbers reflect that. So I've got those numbers there on your desk. I hope you've looked at them. The first page there that you'll see highlighted was Sullivan County. It shows total veteran impact here in Sullivan County, seven hundred and fifteen million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. So that's what's coming into Sullivan County, into veterans' pockets, into healthcare, into paying for taxes, into all the different things that the VA provides. So that's huge in this county. Also, if you look there, kind of over to the left, you're going to see a couple of different numbers tonight. Some of them may make sense, some of them may not. They may kind of contradict each other, and I'll tell you why. The state, we're starting a new program, trying to get this all together. This is really the first time it's even been presented to a commission from anybody out of the ninety-five counties. We're the first one to do it. So, this is going to be, of course, adjusting throughout the quarters and the fiscal years and things as we get better info, better data. So some of you know, we transferred to a new system there a couple, well, about a year ago now. And it's been a lot, a lot, a lot of back and forth between us, between the state, between the VA, and we're finally getting things straightened out. There's been a lot of moving parts. We kind of had to reverse back to the Stone Age and fax things, as crazy as that sounds to some of you, for a while, and we kind of do different things. So, again, these numbers, they're, they're not fully accurate of what we're doing, but they show a huge, a huge thing. So, total VA expenditures will see two hundred and fifteen million, seven hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. Okay, that's what's actually going into veterans' pockets currently. Okay, and that is, that is a new number there. At the end of the year, at the end of the quarter, we'll kind of see all the numbers put together, and I'll break that down for you on the next page here in a minute. Tricare, you'll see, that's our retired guys. That's kind of what they're getting there, and their tricare expenditures. VA home loans, of course, that's veterans getting their, their homes there. So if you see the makeup of VA expenditures, again, you're going to see a couple of different things. You're going to see the veteran population, eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven. That number's way low. Sullivan County's about fifteen thousand right now, and we're the only county out of the ninety-five that are still really actively growing. The rest of the counties are kind of stagnant or they're reducing population due to losing the older veterans. We're pretty much the only one that's still actively growing. So you can kind of look at that page. You're going to see a better snapshot of your actual, or our actual office on page two, where you're going to see Sullivan County. This shows the reporting period for July first, twenty twenty-five to September thirty of twenty twenty-five. Again, this is kind of, this, this is not totally accurate, but we'll look at it, and I'll kind of give you a little bit of updates and kind of going on, kind of what's happening. If you look up there, under TBB, that's the new system that we went to. That's kind of what's helping spearhead everything, trying to make claims go faster and, and working with the VA. It's not perfect, nowhere near perfect, but we're getting there. If you'll look kind of over there to the right, it says average thirty-eight minutes per session. That's counting everything in. So that's if somebody walks in and just initially signs paperwork with us, that takes a minute. Or if they've been in our office for three hours, trying to get them healthcare, trying to get them set up with a nursing home, or trying to get them set up with education. So average thirty-eight minutes for everything we're doing. So ideally, usually when people come in, we're looking at about an hour is what they're spending with us. You'll see two hundred and four point eight hours of productive system use. That is when the system is open and one of us is logged in, working on it, not when it's closed and we're talking on the phone. So we're trying to work on those numbers to figure out how to put, hey, we're doing an outreach. Hey, we're on the phone. That's just active system open, which is still pretty amazing. As you go down to the next part and see TBB Systems Claim Processing Performance, you'll see Sullivan on the left, and you'll see fiscal year twenty twenty-five in blue. You'll see fiscal year twenty twenty-six in red. As you see, we've almost doubled the claims going through there. Again, that is only compensation. It says compensation and pension and DIC claims, but that is really only showing compensation due claims. It hasn't totally kind of grouped together yet. But still, you've seen we've almost doubled what we were doing last year. So things are very, very busy. I'm going to go down kind of to the bottom there, and you'll see VA compensation and pension benefits impact for county veterans. So again, that's Sullivan County as a whole. Again, some of these numbers are not going to make sense exactly. We're still working on that, trying to get that all settled and kind of talking back and forth. But what I really want you to look at, and I don't want to toot my own horn, but I'm going to toot it a little bit. If you look at county ranked by benefits, it says eight. It's out of ninety-five counties. So we're number eight, which is pretty impressive. I mean, we're going up against the entire state of Tennessee. I mean, little Sullivan County's holding out at number eight. So pretty, pretty impressive in that aspect, and that's because of these two behind me. It has absolutely nothing to do with me. Total monthly benefits, you're going to see that's new money. Again, this is not entirely accurate. This is only looking at what's coming in as a new disability. Okay, it's not totally accurate at this moment. But we're looking at eleven million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is just new money that we've come in. New total annual money is a hundred and thirty-three million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, nineteen dollars. So you'll see, if you also go down to the bottom there, it looks at average self-representative. If a veteran kind of does it on their own, average here in Sullivan County, they're looking at eighteen seventy-one with us. They're looking at twenty-one, twenty-eight. So we get them a little bit more money, help them navigate the system. But again, that's only for initial claims for disability. This isn't talking about DIC. This isn't talking about all the things that we do with healthcare. This isn't talking about the things that we do with the nursing homes and all the other things that we do. So really, it's, it's not a great snapshot, but it does show you that our office is really busy. Just even if you look at it, it's just from a new claim percentage. So last year, we were at about four hundred and eight million is what we have total. This year, with the current numbers, everything that we're seeing, what we'll be up to bringing into Sullivan County, putting into veterans' pockets, we're going to be right at six hundred and fifty million is what we're going to be bringing into the veterans' pockets in Sullivan County. So pretty impressive. These guys behind me work like, work like, you know, mowing the mules every single day, and I can't thank them enough. I can't thank you all enough for supporting us and giving us the help and the things there so that we can do what we do.
Thanks, Hunter.
Thank you.
I'll toot his horn. I'm not afraid. I knew he would be long-winded when he got up here, but, I mean, say that Sullivan County's eight. And it's definitely not a I thing. It's not just Sam and Gary. When we did this resolution, they played this room, voted yes. So in my opinion, nobody takes better care of veterans than Sullivan County. So every person in this room will be pretty proud of what we've done, taking care of our veterans. So, thank you.
Does anyone seek recognition? If you want, have any questions? Commissioner Ison?
Thank you, Hunter. I appreciate all you're doing there in that office. You guys are doing great. I know a couple of years ago, when we were talking about it, it was just you, and at the time, the turnaround was pretty, pretty long as far as if somebody called your office, then it was a couple of months before they were ready to get in. Where are you at now on that?
So normally, right now, we're at about two weeks. Call our office, we can get you in in about two weeks. Sonya's handling all of that. She deals everything with that. But we're at about two weeks. We have set some spots back. This is kind of a practice that we put in when Sonya started coming, is that a veteran will get a letter in the mail. It'll say you've got thirty days to respond. They show up or they call us on day twenty-nine and say, I need this in tomorrow. So we've saved a few spots throughout the week. If a veteran needs in ASAP immediately, if this is a life and death thing, or if this is, you know, unfortunately, we talk about twenty-two a day that we're losing to suicide, if it's something of that nature, we'll get them in that day if we have to.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I know that's a major issue, and if they need the help, they need sometimes that.
They need sometimes that, right.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Next order, appointments, vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Madam Clerk, if you will read the names of the three people that have expressed interest in that vacancy.
Mr. Jeff Begley, Mr. Robert Earhart, and Mr. Matthew Hill.
You've heard the names of the people that are interested in the position. The floor is open for nominations. This requires, at this point in time, it still requires simply twelve votes, because we're still, we still have a vacant seat. But we're actually going to be remedying that in our next, in our next action. The floor is open. Recognize Commissioner King.
Thank you. I would like to make the motion to nominate Robert Earhart to be put on the board.
Commissioner King nominates Mr. Robert Earhart, seconded by Commissioner Aker. Commissioner Glover. Recognize Mr. Cross. Crosslight.
Thank you, Chairman. That was, I was going to say, Mr. Earhart, so please say my name to that way it's-
We've got a nomination, second, third, and fourth there.
Do I need to make a space for Mr. Earhart?
Well, I was going to ask, is Mr. Earhart here?
I could make a space there.
I don't know, I don't know if I trust that. Okay. Commissioner Stidham?
It's on to nominate Jeff Begley.
Commissioner Stidham nominates Jeff Begley, seconded by Commissioner Ward. Anyone else seek recognition? Is Mr. Begley, I know Mr. Begley. Is Mr. Begley here? But I do know that he's interested in the position, because he did apply for it. Anyone else seek recognition? Motion by Commissioner Cross for nominations to cease. Recognize Commissioner Crawford.
Seconded then.
Commissioner Crawford seconds. Commissioner Cross's motion without objection. Nomination cease. And we'll, we'll do a roll call vote. Whoever first wants to throw votes is, we'll get the seat.
Aker.
Robert Earhart.
Calhoun.
Robert Earhart.
Carr, Absinthe, Cole.
Earhart.
Crawford.
Earhart.
Cross.
Earhart.
Crosslight.
Earhart.
Barker.
Earhart.
Glover.
Robert Earhart.
Harvey. Hayes.
Earhart.
Horn.
Earhart.
Ison.
Earhart.
Jones.
Robert Earhart.
King.
Robert Earhart.
Leonard.
Earhart.
Locke.
Earhart.
McMurray.
Mr. Earhart.
Means.
Earhart.
Pierce.
Earhart.
Stidham.
Begley.
Vanover.
Robert Earhart.
Ward.
Jeff Begley.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Robert Earhart, twenty-two. Begley, one. Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-one. Earhart, twenty-one. Begley, one.
Having that vacant seat really kind of throws things off.
Tweeny, Earhart, two. Begley, one. Absinthe, one seat vacant.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, Robert Earhart is hereby appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Next order, vacancy to fill District Two commission seat, caused by the resignation of Matt Slagle. This, this seat will expire August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. The floor is open for nominations. Recognize Commissioner Aker.
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight is November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and I come to you like I did on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and nominate Dr. Barry Hopper to fill a seat that was vacated by one of my cohorts who took a position with the Bristol City Council. And as you know, like in twenty-two, this, a couple of months ago, we had the same thing happen. And as Dr. Hopper was here last week, kind of seeing everybody once again, and y'all heard his long past, and are helping and serving and doing, and he's, he's agreed if you all will vote him in to do it once again for us and everything. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Aker moves nomination for Dr. Barry Hopper. Commissioner Harvey.
Seconded then nomination, please.
The floor is open for nominations. I do have to ask, I do have to ask, is there anyone in the public that wishes to be nominated for the seat? I'm required to ask of that. Does anyone wish to be nominated for District Two? Does anyone wish, we're not trying to get rid of, I just got to ask three times.
I gave him a choice, I gave him an option, you know.
Did that, did that young lady there raise her hand? That one right there. Seeing none. Commissioner Aker?
I just appreciate you all's voting in confidence, and look forward to having Dr. Hopper join us once again. A move for-
I entertain a motion for nominations to cease.
Oh, yeah. I entertain a motion for nominations to cease.
Motion for nomination to cease by Commissioner Aker. Commissioner Crawford, second. Without objection. All those in favor, you won't put that on the board or you want to do a roll call? It still requires twelve votes for passage.
Aker.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Carr. Absinthe. Cole.
Hopper, yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Crosslight.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Ison.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Locke. McMurray.
Yes.
Means.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Stidham.
Yes.
Vanover.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes, ma'am.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Twenty-two, yes. One absent, one seat vacant.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, the Honorable Dr. Barry Hopper is once again appointed District Two Commission.
Very briefly, I would like to appreciate, or say that I certainly appreciate your confidence in placing me back on this board. I will do my best to, I'll be here, as is expected, and to understand the issues and make any observations that seem to be relevant. And I will do my best to bring attention to those issues in my district, which I think, as I was looking at the map, is a fairly large district to, to be representing. And it's a grateful opportunity to serve with Mr. Aker and, and Ms. Harvey as an opportunity to continue to learn and understand what this commission's responsibilities are to its citizenry that has elected them. And I'm being appointed, I guess that's even a greater responsibility in a sense. So, thank you again. Appreciate your, opening up your commission to me, to give me an opportunity to serve again. Thank you.
Dr. Hopper, you prepared to take the oath, sir?
I am.
If your lovely wife would join you in the well, and if your district mates would be so inclined to join him as well, Clerk, Clerk Jacob will deliver the oath from her seat.
Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Barry Hopper.
I, Barry Hopper.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
With, I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And which I am about to assume.
And which I'm about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of Tennessee.
Of Tennessee.
And the United States.
And the United States of America.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
The Office of the Duties of County Commissioner.
Representing the Second District.
Representing the Second District.
For Sullivan County, Tennessee.
For Sullivan County, Tennessee. This is the entertainment for the evening.
With that being done throughout the rest of the evening, everything required us once again thirteen votes for passage. We now have the full body once again. Next order, approval of noderes and bonds. Madam Clerk, we have a list.
Sheila T. Absher, Juanita Adams, Ronald T. Allgood, Lonnie Elizabeth Aspley, Richard Atwood, Stephen J. Bumrepper, M.D., Talise Beatty, Jessica E. Bures, Tammy L. Blanton, Melissa G. Bricky, Kristy Joan Cooper, Lourdes Davidson, Shauna Dennis, Julian Earhart, Kelsey J. Ewers, Renee D. Gaskins, Joseph S.W. Gross, Selena Strader Hall, Taylor Alexandria Harmon Russell, Diette L.M. Henderson, Vicki L. Holbrook, Ashley Horton, Philip Hoskins, Kristen L. Howser, Brandon P. Joyner, Laurie A. Landry, Katie Alexa Long, Michael S. McKinney, Kelly M. Munt, Gary Munt, Ashley Nathan, Julie R. Neely, Joe Wesley Riggs, Amy Roberts, Matthew Stephen Rose, Brian Timothy Sausman, Courtney Shelton, Haylitt Aiden Singleton, Tammy Slus, Amy Lane Smith, Richard W. Taylor, Natasha Leanne Taylor, Sarah Rebecca Timbleton, Teresa Ann Thompson, John Nathaniel Trot, Rodney Christopher Urbani, Priscilla Carol Ward.
You've heard the list. Anyone seek recognition on the list as presented? Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Cross, with the Commissioner Cole, seconded by Commissioner Cross. Now how do I get the two of y'all mixed up? From a distance, I tell you. Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on the noderes and bonds as presented. Requiring thirteen votes for passage. Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, the noderes and bonds are approved. Without objection, next order is public comment on agenda and non-agenda related items. If you didn't have the opportunity to sign up, we have signup sheets over there. Anyone that would like to is more than welcome to sign up, three to one. While we're getting, getting the list, I'm gonna go ahead and read the rules for public comment. Each speaker is requested to state their name and address for the clerk's electronic record. Though this is not question and answer, clarifying questions may be permitted. No speaker. No speaker can transfer or yield time to another speaker. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes uninterrupted, and is asked to direct all comments to the Chair of the Body and not the members. At the end of the three minutes, I will let you know and ask that you make your final statements. No one has signed up for agenda related items, but on non-agenda related items, I'd like to invite Denise Skeen.
Hello, my name's Denise Skeen, I live at two seven zero Wyatt Hall Road, up past the top four, basically. Last month, Commissioner Jones spoke rather glowingly about the future of nuclear energy in the state, especially in the form of SMRs, or small modular nuclear reactors. I understand from the work session that you all are looking at zoning, issues for data centers, and bitcoin mining, which would be one of the primary reasons to bring SMRs online. So, I don't know how much control your body has over the placement of these things, but I just wanted to present a few facts that I happen to know about SMRs. Number one is that there are no operational SMRs anywhere in the world, except for China and Russia. The one in Oak Ridge is not licensed, it's not, it's not up and ready yet. All the safety and environmental concerns of the large reactors are still present and not minimized by the size of, of the SMRs. Having a smaller nuclear accident is still having a nuclear accident. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission has loosened the regulations for safety and security for SMRs, which actually makes them more vulnerable to accidents and sabotage. I'm from the coal fields, and one thing I know is that when the Mine Safety and Health Administration loosens regulations, coal miners stop. That's how bad it is. Smaller reactors do not reduce the problem of how to store and dispose of radioactive waste. Their waste could be more massive and longer lived than the waste from larger nuclear reactors. SMRs do not use fuel more efficiently than large reactors. The high assay, low enriched uranium that some of these reactors theoretically use actually requires more uranium to produce, and more uranium per kilowatt hour of electricity produced. Uranium mining itself is environmentally problematic, and it's also a finite resource. I appreciated Commissioner Means's concern about the environmental impacts of bitcoin mining and data centers that you shared at the work session. I hope that you will all keep the health and well-being of all of Sullivan County, the land, the water, the air, and the people in mind as these issues might present themselves to you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And forgive me if I mispronounce your name. Kanina Everest?
Eures.
Thank you very much for being here.
Hi, um, I'm nervous.
Your, your name and address, please.
Okay, Kanina Eures, eight thirty-five Lebanon Road, Kingsport. This is my husband, Paul Eures. I'm, I'm troubled by one of the behavior of the county commissioners, obviously you guys know where this is going, Mr. Joe Carr, who is, again, absent. There's been a pattern of behavior with him that I feel like needs to be addressed. Granted, his latest run-in with the law, and of course he was the innocent until proven guilty, but this is a pattern of ongoing behavior for many years now, and even our own daughter, who is twenty-four years old, has been harassed by him in, in a public setting. I'm concerned for other young women in our community. I mean, tonight, we all recognized Oasis of Kingsport for what they do for women, and I think that if we don't step up and do something, then we're, basically what we just did was completely hypocritical. I also believe that each member is supposed to be at every meeting, and this is the second one. He's missed. I don't know if he's planning on just continuing to not represent us. He is my commissioner. So, that, that is my concern. I know that there's a lot of concerns throughout the entire community that it is very unbecoming behavior for one of our leaders. So, I mean, I'm not asking a question, I'm just saying, you know, this is something we need to really do something about. Take this to the Attorney General of Tennessee. I mean, I know there are steps to having someone removed if they are not going to do the right thing and remove themselves, step down, which I believe, and I know a lot of other people in our community feel the same, that he should step down. So, let's. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else seek recognition? Seeing none, without objection, the public comment portion of the agenda is closed. Next order is approval of the consent counter. On the consent counter, we have items one and three. Floor is open for discussion on the consent counter. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Aker and seconded by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion on the consent counter? Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on the consent counter, requiring unanimous consent. Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, the consent counter is approved. Next order is review of resolutions under old business. Well, the consent counter was old business, so we're gonna start with item number, item number two, recognize Commissioner Locke on item number two, and also we have a PowerPoint presentation, Stephen Bauer from Kingsport, will be available. For any questions you may have, recognize Commissioner Locke on item number two.
Thank you Chair, this resolution for adoption of redevelopment plan, tax increment financing, and a commitment for downtown Kingsport for Dobbin's Taylor Warehouse. Got Mr. Bauer here to do the presentation. Give you a better understanding of what's taking place. They did approve their portion of BMA Tuesday, and our part would be right around a million dollars, with a five percent holdback, be the first hotel for quite some time to be put in Kingsport. We had one years ago called the Downtowner. We haven't had a hotel in downtown Kingsport since then that I'm aware of. It's a very good opportunity, and I'll let Mr. Bauer take over.
Thanks Sir. Was there a clicker, I just say next slide, next slide? So, thank you all for having me again here tonight. I'm gonna run through this presentation. Very brief, I'm gonna do a little bit of the background on tax increment finance, financing, at least in Kingsport. Go in a little bit of the history of the building, and then the details of the project for you. So, I like to show this, it's kind of easy on the screen. These are the redevelopment districts in Kingsport. This is what makes a project eligible for tax increment financing. As you can see on there, downtown Kingsport is all a redevelopment district. We recently expanded the Lynn Garden District there in red. We also have Easton Commons, if you're familiar with Hobby Lobby, McAllisters. And then if you keep going, we have Stonegate, which is the Westgate subdivision. And then in the blue down there towards the south is the River Bend District, it's also where the Blake is located. And I show this just to show some of the past tax increment financing projects we've done in Kingsport. You know, everything from residential to, to some of our power shopping centers. This is the downtown district map. Highlighted there in red is the location of the Dobbin's Taylor Warehouse. So, as you can see, it's in the downtown district, right there on the western edge. So, I like to show this picture, if anybody's familiar with the, the Kingsport Press area. Used to be a million square feet under roof. We now have Kingsport Chamber, Kingsport City School Offices, Food City, Town Park Loft, and our Farmer's Market. You can see there, kind of the southwest corner is Dobbin's Taylor. We kind of see that as the, the last piece of this puzzle. So, just a little bit on the history of Dobbin's Taylor, if anybody isn't familiar with it, was built in nineteen seventeen. Employed nearly four hundred people at one time. It's been made, used mainly for storage by the Kingsport Press and Dobbin's Taylor Hardware Company since nineteen eighty-five. Our Kingsport Economic Development Board, which is also the industrial development board of the city of Kingsport, signed a long-term lease in two thousand and twenty-three with, with the intent of saving this building. Our, our first order of business was to market it, get a developer interested. We've, we've been able to do that. With any vacant, old, old building, our maintenance efforts have increased, but the building continues to deteriorate. So, a little bit on the project there. That, that facility is so big, we've had to number the buildings. So, you can see building one, two, three, four, and five, and six. So, the developer is Tim Butters. He is out of Williamsport, Pennsylvania. If you look up his hotel there, it's City Hall Grand. It is an independent hotel. It has changed on this one, it will also be independent. But if he can recreate what he's done, and Williamsport will have a very unique project. Building four and five there, which is on the east side, that, that's the cinder block structure, if you've ever drove down Press Street and seen that. That part of the building was built for Kingsport Press, I think in the fifties, just for storage. That part will be demolished to make way for a, a parking lot to serve the hotel. And then we, we will also build a public parking lot for anybody's use. Building six, if, if you know the Tobacco Road, it's how most people know it. That will be the restaurant portion and bar, and then the main building will, will be the hotel rooms. We go to the next one. So, that's just what it looks like today. You know, even in the rough shape vacant, I think it still looks pretty good, a lot of character. And then if we go to the next one, that is what the plans are to make the, the facility look like at the completion. This is not a final rendering, but very close. This is not a final rendering, but very close to what this project will look like. As you can see, he wants to keep a lot of the original facade, um, keep the windows as close as we can. Really happy with how it turned out. And then we can go one more. So just to show you kind of the, the site plan, once those buildings are removed. That lot there, the, the southeast, um, that will be the public parking lot. So we'll have about thirty-four spaces, and then the rest will serve the, the hotel and restaurant. We'll go one more. So some of the main issues and the reason for the tax increment request, um, obviously with a building over a hundred years old, we have a few issues that we've got to address, the developer has to address. So the, the building is sprinkled. Everything in there has to be completely overhauled. There is asbestos in every single window. Has a hundred and twenty there. I think it's closer to a hundred and forty windows in that property. There is an elevator. We cannot use it. I've been told it still runs. But that has to be pulled out, a new custom car built. And then, of course, all the plumbing and electrical has to be replaced. It hasn't been used, and who knows when? And we can get to the next one. So some of the contributions, um, the Kingsport Economic Development Board did approve all aspects of this project. That includes development agreements, uh, loan agreements, sublease documents. Um, there is about a two and a half million contribution that the city of Kingsport and Economic Development Board are putting towards this project to develop that parking lot and do that demolition. The Kingsport Housing and Redevelopment Authority approved the tax increment financing October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. The Kingsport Board of Mayor and Alderman approved the project details, including the loan documents and the tax increment financing on Tuesday of this week. We'll go one more. So the, the tax increment finance request is one point three million over a twenty-five-year period with a five percent holdback. I've put on there, as you can see, the existing city and county property taxes. Those will remain, like with all artists, we do not abate any of the existing taxes. Below that, you can see the, the percent retaining that five percent holdback. So that, that will be new revenue that the city and county receives in form of property tax. And then once the TIF matures or is paid off, you can see at the bottom what the new property tax will be generating at, at that property. We'll get to the next one. So just some of the economic impact numbers. Um, it does represent over a ten million dollar investment in downtown Kingsport. Um, there'll be roughly forty temporary construction jobs, fifty permanent for the hotel and restaurant side. Estimated sales tax revenue, about sixty-five thousand a year. Hotel motel tax revenue, um, is about a hundred and eighty thousand a year, we have estimated. And then I have on there, um, for every hundred dollars spent on lodging, hotel guesting, another two hundred and thirty-four. That's something the tourism people are very familiar with. But I see the biggest impact for this project. We're taking a historic, I consider the most historic building in Kingsport and turning it into something that's income-producing rather than sitting vacant. And then with that, the presentation is done. Happy to answer questions.
The completion date?
So completion, we're targeting March of twenty-seven. Start date would be mid-December. So we've got everything ready and geared up to go.
The floor is open for discussion. Recognize Commissioner Aker.
Uh, thank you. Great presentation. Hundred percent behind this. And, uh, just curious, are there any other in Kingsport, like these boutique hotels, has this been done down there before?
It has not.
Sure. And the reason why I'm asking, why I'm gonna ask that question? Even though there's two just north of us, on the other side of the line in Bristol, it was very interesting watching those go up and seeing what they do for a downtown. Because that, one of those, that last line on that last slide, you know, for every hundred dollars they spend, they spend two hundred and thirty-four dollars in, in other things. And I'll be honest with you, when, when those were first announced almost ten years ago, I was kind of like, wow, that's interesting. I can tell you, it, it's, it's done well there. I'm dumbfounded by how many out-of-state cars I see because of the Interstate eighty-one that comes up and down and people pull over, uh, the restaurants. And, uh, and I'll, I'll be the first to tell you, I've had many, uh, after funeral celebrations for families of both, of, of, because of the event center spaces. So, yeah, no, I, I think it's a great, great opportunity to rebuild or repurpose these old buildings downtown and, and make downtown vibrate again. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Stephen, good, good presentation. The numbers for the, the county and city, those are based on current property appraisals, right?
Correct.
If we have reappraisals and we've just gone to two, going to two years, do those affect those numbers? Are they locked in with the TIF?
They are not locked in. So there's language in the, the TIF agreements, um, that, you know, the, the TIFs are subjects to tax rate changes and property assessments. So what we do to get the current value and then versus the, the project value when it's complete, we work with the assessor's office. So they take it based on today's, um, how they do today's assessment. So, you know, if property rates, property values continue to rise, um, that, that would benefit the TIFs to pay off early.
Right. I may be wrong, but I think twenty-five years is the longest we've done a TIF. I may, I may be wrong on that, but, uh, usually fifteen. Why the extension?
So it is the longest we've gone, um, but we have done twenty-five years on Brickyard. Uh, Brickyard Park was a twenty-five-year one, as was, um, Friendship Honda in Lynn Garden. That was another twenty-five-year one. So we, we don't have any criteria for us on what we stay at. Obviously, we'd like to keep it lower, but we really look at the need for the project. How much are we gonna have to give to make this work and make the numbers work? Which is the reason for the twenty-five years.
Did we do a TIF across the street where the Chamber and the, uh, Board of Education are located? Would they redevelop that?
I don't believe so. No, we did not.
Okay. The developers just paid for it off?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure the aspects of that deal, but I know Town Park Loft, there were incentives involved there.
Okay. Thank you.
Recognize Commissioner Hopper.
Just a quick question. Uh, Mr. Butters' experience in, in designing and, and carrying through a project like this, what is his background?
So his background is redevelopment of old buildings. Um, he did about a fifty thousand square foot similar mill in Williamsport that he turned into lofts and, um, commercial restaurant space. And then he has City Hall Grand there as well that he owns and operates. So it was the original, I think I'm gonna get this right, the original City Hall of Williamsport. Um, and he redeveloped that into a boutique hotel.
Thank you.
Mr. Irison?
Thanks for coming forward with this. I'm, I'm in favor of it, but I do have one question. The twenty-five years does seem a little bit long, but why only a five percent holdback? It seems like we're going smaller and smaller, and I thought it was trying to have it, you know, ten to twenty or so. So I'm just kind of curious how it went to five.
So every project we get, um, we, every project stands on its own merit, um, when we do these. You know, we did five percent on, on the Friendship Dealership, um, just because of the amount of cost that went into redeveloping that property. The same on this one. Once we looked at it and, and the shape of the building, we thought it warranted kind of going to the max amount. You know, Brickyard, they, they all seem to change. On residential, they're typically thirty to forty percent of a holdback. On a commercial project like this, in the redevelopment of this size, we, we thought five percent was, was the way to go to get the most out of it.
Anyone else seek recognition? Commissioner Locke? Commissioner Locke moves waiver of rules on item number two, requiring sixteen votes for passage. Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on item number two, requiring sixteen votes for passage. Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three yes, one answer.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, item number two is adopted. And without objection, I've had a, a request. I do, did, we, we have some, someone here, um, that's gonna speak on item number seven, also has a PowerPoint. And I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Means, uh, out order on item number seven. And Mr. Ketrin has a presentation he would like to give as well. So without objection, recognize Commissioner Means on item number seven.
Bill Ketrin, I'm the president of Build a Better Blountle. Some of our board members are Jessica Means, Joyce Cross, White is our treasurer, Matthew Johnson, Amber Corbett, Cliff Carrico, and Ed Bush. What we wanted to do is come and offer our encouragement to support this resolution. I'm a small business owner myself, started in two thousand and one. We now own business, we have employees, we provide sales tax. In Sullivan County alone, there's between twenty and thirty new business, new businesses per month. Is that correct, Ms. Jacobs? About twenty to thirty? So what this does for our organization, and hopefully for Sullivan County, is to create a place that will become a focal point for us to have a business incubator. Now, again, this is rough draft. There is only two business incubators locally, well, three. Uh, ETSU has one. There is the Holston Development Center down in Hawkins County. Then there's other, and then the Virginia Highlands. There's no business incubator for Blountle or Bristol. So our vision with our organization is to create a business incubator, but we have to have a place for it. So at this time, it's still in draft. Uh, we're not to the point of asking for money. That's not our goal. Our goal is for this to be all self-supporting if and when we go there. I will say this is that a small business that starts here is most likely going to stay here. You don't have to provide incentives to try to get them to come in, and, uh, it's, it's a long-term investment. Again, I've been in business by myself for about twenty-five years.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Means?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, uh, Mr. Ketrin for coming and speaking and to Build a Better Blountle. So there's, there's no correlation with Build a Better Blountle right here with this resolution. But, um, he's a successful businessman right here in the heart of Blountle. And, um, so we thought it would be appropriate because we value his input in the business world here. So, um, moving on, tonight, I'm bringing forward a resolution that's simple, responsible, and good for the people of Sullivan County. As you all know, the county purchased the old Blountle Elementary School campus. It's a solid building, and it's part of our history. But buildings don't help anyone unless we put them to work, and that's what this resolution does. Here in Sullivan County, nearly ten percent of our workforce is made up of entrepreneurs and small business owners. These are the folks who start with an idea at their kitchen table. They're the ones who create the majority of new jobs, and they're not asking for a handout. They're asking for a fair shot and a place to grow. Right now, many small businesses struggle to find affordable professional space. The cost is too high, and the options are too limited. That means good ideas die on the vine. We don't need that. We need to give our people room to build, to hire, and to succeed right here at home. This resolution designates part of the Blountle Elementary School campus for a small business and entrepreneur space. A dedicated space preserved by this commission where local small businesses and startups can work, meet clients, collaborate, and get the resources they need to grow. This is not a giveaway, it's an investment. It's an efficient one. We're taking an existing county-owned facility and putting part of it to work for job creation. We're encouraging local business, strengthening our tax base, and creating opportunity without raising taxes or expanding government. And it aligns perfectly with who we are. Sullivan County is built on hard work, on people willing to take risks, on families who want to build something that lasts. This resolution honors that spirit. So by passing this, we say clearly, we support our small businesses, we support our entrepreneurs, and we believe Sullivan County's future is worth investing in. So I respects, respectfully ask for your vote tonight. Thank you.
You've heard the explanation on item number seven. The floor is open for discussion. Recognize Commissioner Jones.
I am a, a co-sponsor on this resolution, but in my discussions with the sponsor. And we have three resolutions that never came before any committee, never came before the work session. And all three of them are asking for waiver of rules. One of them's committing money, this county committing money, uh, if you read through the resolutions. I just felt like in my discussion with her, we were gonna be on first reading, that we could look at some of the other, uh, spaces and get the guidelines that they operate under and have a little more information before we vote on this. I'm, I'm in support of the resolution, but I'm in favor of, uh, not putting it on waiver of rules. Any of these were...
Commissioner Means, would you respond to that?
Um, yes, we were, we have been in discussion. But the discussions that you spoke about are not, this is just to reserve the space as it rolls out and the remodeling is done. That's it. There's nothing more to it.
Commissioner King?
Thank you. Sorry, again, and same thing, Jessica, when I talked to you, Ms. Means, when I talked to you, I never did tell you that I was gonna be a co-sponsor. I told you I would talk to you, and I asked you to talk to some other people and then come back, and I never did get a response to that. So I like to take my name off as a co-sponsor.
I apologize, I didn't realize you were put on there.
I did not, uh, agree to that. But I've got some problems with this. We've got the campus up there, and are you in agreement with the building? Is that where you're gonna put this, inside that building?
Mr. Means, do you mean that?
The Blountle Elementary School building, yes, that's what the resolution says.
Okay. I guess my question is, who, on a day-to-day basis, who is gonna let people in to that room or park, whatever? And who's gonna make sure that, that when the day is done, that it's locked back? And then everybody that's come to that room is out of the building? We've got people that works there, and, and I've talked to several people. They're not really comfortable with the safety of having people coming in from the outside, using space in that building, and not, uh, really being supervised by anybody from camp. If you've got somebody that, that, I'm not trying to open a business or something, and they're in there, I mean, we don't have control of what they say or what they do inside that space. I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, but I just don't think the Blountle School building is the place to put it. If we can find some, another place that is, we can secure, and I, I think you, you could do it. But I don't think the Blountle, uh, building is the place to do it. We're having problems now with people coming in and not, uh, you know, going to the front office. They're coming through, you know, when people working and stuff are coming through doors, and then, you know, they're running back through the building. And that's, I don't want to. And then, again, when we get the, all the stuff behind the school built and open, and more people be on the campus and stuff, it's gonna be more, uh, of a, you know, a problem to make sure that the people stop coming in our school without, you know, uh, that they don't need to be there, I guess would be the best way to say it.
Right. And that'll fall under the mayor's office. We've already spoken about that.
But who's, who's gonna be in charge of that?
That, that'll fall under the mayor's office, and he'll, if that's what he chooses to do.
Is he gonna have a person in charge of that that looks at it daily?
That would be a question for him. This is not to, we are not organizing the guidelines of it right at this moment. This is just to reserve the space. Those rooms are over there, just sitting there, available for people to, that, this just adds back to the community. It's not to, um, they're not, they're not gonna be allowed to be in there right now. This doesn't have anything about, they're allowed to be there until dark or any of those things. This is just to reserve the space.
So you reserve the space to do what?
That is to be worked out later. This is just to work, to reserve the space.
It, it, I think we need, we need some more answers before we move forward with this. I, I think there's, it's a good concept, and if it was put in the right place, I think it'd be good. But I don't think our school building up here, and with all the offices and all the employees of Sullivan County up there, I, I just don't think that's a good deal.
Thank you, Commissioner King. Recognize Commissioner Blountle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Means, on the, on the resolution, the way it's working here, Sullivan County hereby designates a preserved mobile land. designates a preserved mobile asset, a hundred square feet, and the Blountville Elementary School building serves a small business and entrepreneur space dedicated to supporting locally owned small businesses. And then here again, who is going to be doing the scheduling for this space? And who's going to be responsible for setting up appointments for these folks coming in and out? Who's going to be responsible for the computer, the fax machine? Who's going to be responsible for all this stuff?
There's nothing in this resolution that says anything about a computer or a fax machine or a reserve, this is just to reserve the space. That's it.
Here again, you're talking about the mayor's office, there's two employees in there. Well, really just one, the mayor and his secretary. And I don't know, I don't know who's going to be in charge of it. We're going to vote for something here and put something in the law in the county in a place that designates a small business area for people to come to, Blountville School, we don't have no guidelines, we don't know who's going to be in charge, we don't know who's going to pay the bills, and we don't have any oversight. So I can't support it, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Proff.
My question on this whole thing is, a hundred square feet? That doesn't seem very much property.
Right, it's no less than that.
For what you're asking.
Right, right. It's to allow the flexibility as they grow and they remodel, for them to, if they need to move that small business room to a different room, I mean, there's empty rooms just sitting over there right now that could be used, this has so much potential.
But what you're saying, then, we want a hundred foot now, later on, it could be a thousand foot, it could be three thousand.
If somebody wants to come.
So someone's going to have to come up with the renovation of the property and doing all of that?
It's already renovated. It's already renovated. This is zero, this is zero effort, just to assign one of those rooms for a purpose. That's it.
I didn't know that the elementary school campus had all those renovated rooms.
Yeah, if you go over there, you'll see, they're renovated, they're sitting there just empty, waiting for community use.
Why don't the school board get rid of them? I've been over there, I've been over there, I've been to the administration. The only place I've been to school is the cafeteria.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you. This is just a general comment, I think that, I think this was mentioned by Commissioner Sam Jones. I think waiver of rules is really something that we should reserve for, something that's an emergency, that we have to have a quick answer for, and first reading is really something, I think, that allows us to have these discussions like this, and this really does need to come back to the work session, and everybody's had some valid comments, and this gives us opportunity to talk about it, so I would encourage a sponsor to do it on first reading.
Commissioner Means.
Yeah, we will put it on first reading, at least as a commission.
Just know, once someone knows first reading, that cuts off all discussion, so after you move first reading, we'll be moving on to item four.
Okay, we'll move to first reading.
Commissioner Means, move to first reading on item number seven, without objection. Recognize Commissioner Jones on item number four.
Yes, this was a resolution from the school requesting the reallocation within their budget of money. We did this for departments all the time. I would ask the director of schools to come forward and answer some questions on this, explain what they're doing. Mr. Carter. Thank you. They were in Nashville last work session, or they would be here to answer those questions.
Thank you. That's okay, I'll just speak out. I want first to say thank for the opportunity and apologize to Commissioner Jones for not being here last week. The Tennessee School Board Association met in Nashville, we were down there. And so, I don't feel like I did a good job of sharing the information about this particular resolution. Basically, what this is, within the maintenance budget, Mr. Burge had some positions, a total of three, four, five positions that he did not refill through attrition, retirement, and everything like that, which generated the money in the first place to do this. Beyond that, I think there was a question about our employees not benefiting. Seventeen different people who currently work for Sullivan County Schools, and either the maintenance department or coaches who have been mowing these fields, whether they're football, soccer, baseball, they've been doing that for years without no compensation for that other than the coaches taping. So there's twelve of those that are going to receive a stipend for something that they've been doing, no pay. And then five other employees that were re, either reassigned or given promotions or raises. And three of those positions were former mowing crew. They would not be able to receive this raise that they're going to get if we had not done this. And so, no domain. Seventeen people are benefiting from this within our school system already, promotions, raises, and the Barrett, what we're getting out of that are ten additional mowings, which Bill talked with Barrett, tried to get it to where we would get it on a good sequence of the dates that they're mowing, so it's consistent, we don't get out of line there. They're going to be doing the weed control, which is, and all the areas that they hadn't, they didn't do last year, and then there's additional areas that are being added to that. And then, like I said, the inside of the fences and the stairs, we were trying to keep up with those with the three people that just wasn't happy to level the need to be consistent. And so, at the end of the day, we also are being able to pay those coaches something for the work they're doing without having been paid for in the past. And in my experience, the coaches do get a small stipend, some type of stipend for doing that, just to say thank you for taking care of the field. So, I'd like to just move forward this. We've really enhanced our campuses. Obviously, this is a recruiting effort, in some cases, if a parent pulls up looking at a school, trying to figure out what schools they're going to send their children to, like first impressions, there's always going to be the curb appeal when they come up. And I think if you've been on our campuses, you can see the beautification and the aesthetic appeal that's given us with going this route. I know when I first started, I'd go on the Westridge Campus, and you'd go there on a Monday, and then the following Monday, they would have been finished with mowing and starting again. So it was a seven-day process. Now we're able to do that in one day, and it really has made a difference on our campuses. I get compliments and compliments all the time on that. So, and then, what that's enabled Mr. Burge to do, again, if you go on our campuses, you'll see the beautification of our campuses, and the work that's being done by our maintenance department is very impressive. And we're going to continue to do those, and those guys are really, really on board on that, so. They will answer any questions, but just like to get your support.
Recognize Commissioner Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand part of the motivation here is to make all your campuses look the same and give all the same attention, so one campus that looks so much better than the other, and make the curb appeal standard across the county, so I think that's a good thing to do. Also reduces your liability for some of your workers who can have an accident pretty easily mowing or weed eating or something. So, good plan, and I also mowed a baseball field for about fifteen years when I taught this. Is it going to be retroactive or anything?
I don't think so either.
It's not a good a shot, but good program, so thank you for being here.
That is a good.
Maybe at that rate of pay back then, maybe they might do it.
You made a valid point with the liability, the equipment and the areas that are picking up and mowing were areas that we haven't been mowing for years there on different campuses. So they have the equipment, they have the ability, they're trained for those stipends, so that is another part of that.
Commissioner Glover.
Mr. Carter, thank you for, appreciate you. I know you've got a lot of stuff going on, I'm really busy, but we're talking about a lot of money here, and that's the reason why I asked Sam to get you that.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And how much additional charges are there going to be from the group that's done that now to take on the extra work that you're talking about?
The ten extra mowings are one hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred, which is just, it's just extending the number of mowing, so it's the same thing as each time. Weed control, seventy-six thousand eight hundred, and the extra areas, total fifty-eight thousand eight hundred.
So that's a total of how much have you got there? It was a hundred and sixty-two thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, that hundred and sixty-two is the ten mowings themselves.
Hundred and sixty-two thousand is the extra ten mowings?
Yes.
Okay, and then you said the next was weed control, which is all the, like the crats and everything where weeds grow up, all the beds, landscaping beds, all those areas, that's
seventy-six thousand eight hundred.
Okay.
Fifty-eight thousand eight hundred for the extra areas that weren't included before, inside the fences of the ballfields and different areas that hadn't been mowed by Barrett. And then you've got the athletic stipends are including that, twelve thousand. And to be, to tell you, our folks have not been doing weed control other than spraying for years. That basically was areas that hadn't been touched, and so I reached out to our schools and asked them to have their PTOs to come on campus and do that, and their staffs have done some of it as well. But to ask them to do that ongoing every time it's needed, that's a big ask, so I don't think that's sustainable over a period of time.
Okay.
And you see those campuses, and you see all that growth, it's right at the front door if you're going in.
I pulled up the contract that was done on four one twenty-four, and for twenty mowings for sixteen schools, we're paying this guy three hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. When you take three hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars for twenty mowings, and you add on another two hundred and ninety-seven thousand six hundred, we're going to have six hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars in cutting grass and spraying weeds.
Where before we had, and it wasn't being done, it wasn't being taken care of.
Was this, and we're involved with this, the last time this was done, we didn't even take the lower bid, we left almost seventy thousand dollars on the table. Was this not bidded out again?
Not again, though, it's a three-year contract.
So the three hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars a year is for three years, so we've got two years left on that. Is this two hundred and ninety-seven thousand going to be?
That's not, not bidded out, no.
I mean, you guys are going to have to come up with some money over there for some other things later on, and I mean, over half a million dollars for mowing, six hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars for mowing and weeding. That's a lot of money.
I think if you put it out there with the employees that were doing it before and benefits, I don't think you're going to be too far off. We almost really saw a savings last year.
I don't see that.
The number of people.
Commissioner Locke.
What's the contract though?
It's year two, one more year.
So Attorney Street, if we are hiring contracted, if we're hiring a lawn mowing company under contracted services, and the school board or whoever department sign a contract between that particular department and the county, after the contracted service worker come back in and request more money, I know they're coming in doing more property management and other stuff, but how can that be brought back into the county without it going through bid?
Attorney Street.
Well, I don't know anything about this particular contract, but I thought you said it wasn't put out for bid to begin with, so it must be one of the, it must be, oh, I thought you said it was.
The original was, but I didn't.
I don't know the answer to that question, I'd probably have to talk with our purchasing agent to find out exactly what's going on.
Well, if the original one was out for bid, this is another contract, or going to be, I would assume that would need to be put through Chris Davis's office, between Chris Davis and Chuck Carter.
Did this go through Chris?
I'll have to ask Bill on that, whether he's out of bid. I'm trying to get sure.
Well, it would need to go through Chris.
I doubt it did, because they chose to have it bid.
Recognize Commissioner, Commissioner Glover.
The reason I'm saying that, and I've got, I've got what it was, the last bid, the person that's doing the job now was three twenty-four eight. The next bid was two fifty-four two, so it's seventy thousand dollar difference. And I don't know why, and I don't know exactly how it was handled that way, but we left seventy thousand dollars on the table out there. So two years, that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we're not bidding this out, but we're just going to go ahead and give him two hundred and ninety-seven thousand six hundred dollars more on top of three twenty-four eight for mowing and weeding.
When we bid stuff out, we don't necessarily take the lowest bid, due to what's in the contracted stipulations from the bidder. We have been known to take higher bid amounts for certain reasons.
But that is on special stuff, though. It's not on mowing and weeding.
But I think, before we move on this resolution, I think there's some more due diligence to look into, and I don't think anybody will disagree with me on that, and if you do, then we'll spend one.
I'm done, I mean, that was my question, I mean, that's a lot of money, and like I said, when you add that up, that's six hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars, even though that was a three-year, a three-year bid, you know, this should have been simplified process, I mean, that's a lot of money.
Commissioner Ward.
I agree, that is a lot of money, but I think when we start talking, it's not just mowing and weeding. When we start talking about mowing, we're not mowing my front yard. I mean, we're mowing a campus, and I can speak with a lot of experience, when my kids were at South, president of Football Booster Club, I spent many, many weekends, we'll talk about this later, Chuck, and I'll send you an invoice, mowing and weed eating myself because it wasn't getting done. We'd have workdays and hit parents down there, three or four would show up, my kids would end up being two of those, so. We're not, when you start looking at campuses, I'll give you an example. Then Sullivan South High School, now Sullivan Middle School. The growth went so long at the middle school, it overgrown the whole entire tennis courts. You couldn't even see where the tennis courts were, you couldn't even get to the tennis courts. They just recently went in there and cleared all that out and trying to clean that mess up, so you're talking years and years worth of growth, and that's a huge campus. You look at Westridge, how big that campus is, I mean, we're not talking about a five-minute, ten-minute job. And I think I was at the school board meeting that night when some of that bid process was going on, and there was a certain requirement that you had to have, I couldn't pull my truck and trailer burden and pull out my push mower and bid on that. You had to have so many mowers and so many people up there working so you could get it done, so it didn't take, a one-time mowing didn't take two weeks. So I think when you, yes, it is a lot of money, but you're talking, is it sixteen schools? Seventeen, whatever? Seventeen? Whatever, sixteen. Some pretty big campuses, a lot of property. And hats off to you, Mr. Carter, campuses that have never looked better. It's good to drive on those campuses and see them looking good compared to back then when it was so outsourced. I'm not even sure it ever got mowed in the summertime back in the day. And when I say back in the, I'm talking just right before you got here.
I know it's.
In the summertime, it got mowed one time in three months, two and a half months for the whole summer.
I know one campus that when I came here, it was a volunteer that's been mowing it and was mowing it every time it got mowed. And so the liability on that, if it had an accident, just what that would be. But I do want to come back and give you better information about purchases. I understand.
Recognize Commissioner Ackert.
Thank you, Chairman. And Commissioner Ward was talking about, I don't know if he was saying his front yard was bigger than the school's campus or smaller than the school's campus. But this is, I am by knowing as a professor of mowing and able to say all that, but here's where I think that the questions come up about the money. We're essentially okaying the change in a contract during mid-session because this money's just funding it for the rest of this budget season, and then we're going to have to fund that amount of money during the budget season for a contract that has been changed. And we're trying to do it on waiver of rules. Is there a reason it has to be done tonight?
Just for the ongoing services.
Right. I mean, that way we can have some of these questions. And, you know, as Commissioner Jones mentioned earlier, you know, when we have these resolutions and then we throw them, when they don't go through a committee or anything, then we throw a waiver of rules on them, we should question everything. My thoughts aren't anything about, you know, what's best. It's like, we've got a contract, so now, and Commissioner Locke talked about, you know, we're essentially extending the contract without it going to a bid, and this money's only going to fund it through June, and then we're going to have to refund that whole contract again. So my biggest thing is, I'm not going to vote for it since it's on waiver of rules. I don't think we need to rush this thing, when we're spending money and doing that. So, thank you.
Commissioner Ierson.
I was going to say basically the same thing David Ackert said, is probably waiver of rules is not the right thing to do on this just because of the scope of it. And if we can answer our attorney a question he's not sure about, I don't think we should push forward with that. It's kind of a good thing to make sure our legal side says we're doing the right thing. The one thing that Commissioner Glover was talking about, and he's right, because it was a seventy thousand dollar difference, and I think that between the contract I was looking at here a minute ago, it's thirty-five hundred dollars per mowing. So if you add the ten mowings, that's another, so it put about a hundred thousand dollars difference between the two different mowers that are going to do the bidding on the same position. So it's a big number. I really hope that we don't put it on waiver of rules because I think it needs a little more discussion and a little more from our attorney.
Commissioner Harvey.
I just wanted to provide some personal experience in this. I do think it is important. My husband was principal at Rock Springs Elementary for almost ten years, and he always had his lawnmower up there. He was mowing all the time because it looked horrible. And, you know, that shouldn't be the way our schools look. You shouldn't have to go there and go, because you think, well, if it looks like this on the outside, I can't imagine what it looks like on the inside. So, yeah, if you do have that retroactive pay, then that'd be great. Thank you.
Recognize the sponsor.
I appreciate all the comments. We are going to put this on first reading, and I think you need to understand in here there's stipends that are included in this for current employees, and there's seventeen employees that are going to be benefiting in this moving around with the money. It's not all going to the mowing. I think maybe there's a little bit of misconception on that, but that's why we have work sessions, and I appreciate you coming tonight. It'll be on first reading, and we'll have a work session next month to discuss it even more. Thank you.
And the sponsor's mic is always open, but Commissioner King had his light on, but I was recognizing the sponsor. But you've already, you've correct, your sponsor's already moved first reading, so be consistent.
I'll ask the lighter.
Okay. So sponsor moved first reading on item number four. Next order, item number five. Recognize Commissioner Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an appropriate night to read item five. Talked a lot about veterans tonight. It's the month that Veterans Day falls in, and even Hunter Woodall mentioned something about veteran suicide and what a sad situation that is. So I'd like to read item five, then ask veteran Todd McKinnon to say just a few words about it before we vote, if we could please. But item five is a resolution to recognize the American Legion's Be the One program and to partner with local American Legion posts in raising public awareness of that program's mission to end veteran suicides in the nine-eight-eight suicide crisis lifeline. Being further resolved, the Sullivan County Commission urges every county government entity and private organization to promote the nine-eight-eight suicide prevention hotline and encourage all to host annual suicide prevention training. So if there's no objection, I'd like to ask veteran Todd McKinnon to say a few words about this program.
Mr. McKinnon, thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. Truly appreciate it. I was talking with Gary, fellow legionnaire, Gary Stinn, former post commander, post three. I was like, who should I send this to? He's like, send it to your county commissioner. I said, sounds good. And Zane took it and ran with it, and I appreciate it. And like was talking about earlier, about twenty-two veterans a day commit suicide, which is outrageous. And, but it's more than that. Sixty-five hundred young adults between ten and twenty-four commit suicide on an annual basis as well. And this type of training and this type of awareness could go a long way in reducing numbers, not only in the veteran population, but in the youth and young adults that are out there that are committing suicides. Back in August, I created a commission called Tennessee's Be the One Commission to End Veteran Suicide across the entire state. I think thus far we have about a dozen or so counties that have passed some sort of resolution similar to this. And tonight, you know, you guys are going to be one of the first, and I truly appreciate it, and I know these gentlemen appreciate it. I'm joined by Commander Angela Perletteria, post three in Kingsport, stand up, and Butch out of post one forty-five in Bristol, the post commander. Between these two gentlemen, they represent about twelve hundred veterans and voters in the county. And of course, with the Legion Auxiliary and the Sons, that number jumps up to about sixteen hundred within the county alone. So you're representing these folks very well, and I appreciate it, especially if you pass this. Commissioner Vanover, thank you very much. Commissioner Stinn, thank you for your continued service. And to the veterans that are on here, thank you, Sam, thank you, and Commissioner Crosswhite, thank you, Gold Star family member. I truly appreciate your service to our county. Thank you all very much. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon, for being here, and thank you for what you're doing. I'd like to ask the waiver of rules to pass this tonight to get recognition for this fine program, and anyone who votes yes could be added as a co-sponsor.
You've heard the explanation on item number four. Floor is open for discussion. Anyone seek recognition? Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on item number four, requiring sixteen votes for passage. Does any member wish to change their vote? Man over.
Twenty-three has voted yes.
Having received a necessary majority of the votes cast, item number five is adopted. Item six, recognize Commissioner Means on item number six.
This resolution, we've got a lot of strikeouts, and I've put on your desk a updated version of what the resolution will say. I gave you, Ms. Jacobs, I gave you a copy of that, too. Okay. So basically, it will be amended to say, "A resolution of the Sullivan County Board of Commissioners to amend the Sullivan County zoning resolution and/or Sullivan County Planning Commission rules and regulations to impose a four-month moratorium to begin upon passage of this resolution on the location, construction, operation, permitting, investing, et cetera, of data mining centers or crypto mining centers within Sullivan County, and to direct the staff of the Sullivan County Planning and Co. Department to study such land uses and provide a recommendation for zoning text amendments and/or changes to the Sullivan County Planning Commission rules and regulations, and any other appropriate regulations." And then we'll also strike out the part where it says potentially increases costs to residential rate payers. Today, we're not going to vote on this measure. We're placing it on first reading because it's an issue that deserves responsible review and strong protections for the people of Sullivan County. This proposal is not a ban, it is a protective pause. It ensures we have the time, data, and expert input needed to understand the full impact of large-scale data mining operations before any approval is considered. This pause allows us to protect our infrastructure, our rural communities, our farms, and our quality of life while we gather facts and establish proper safeguards. Here are the key reasons this protective pause is necessary. Large-scale data mining centers run 24/7 and demand massive amounts of electricity, risking strain on our local grid. Cooling systems, and I'll add to that, I spoke with an electrician today, and he made it very clear to me, I won't say which electric company, but we are not ready on, as far as our electric grid goes, to handle any sort of data mining company that might come in here.
Commissioner Means, if you might want to withdraw your motion for first reading, if you're going to continue explaining the resolution.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah. Well, I was just going to say a few facts about it, and then I'll.
Then you can move first reading after that.
Okay, I'll move it after that, yeah. I'll withdraw the first reading, and I'll move it in a minute. Okay, so cooling systems for these facilities often require substantial water use, generate heat and noise, pollution. Noise from industrial server farms can disrupt residential area farms and rural environments. Most data mining centers create very permanent local jobs despite their heavy infrastructure impact. Increased energy demand for these facilities can raise utility costs. Property values may decrease when industrial data centers are built near neighborhoods or agriculture lands. Heavy equipment use and maintenance track fit can cause significant road wear. And so this is just a great step in that first direction. Now I will move to first reading, so.
Sponsor moves first reading on item number six. Without objection, item number eight. Recognize Commissioner Vanover on item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item eight is a resolution to authorize county mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with Blount County Sheriff's Office Juvenile Detention Center to continue provision of juvenile detention services and/or temporary holding resource services for any child in juvenile court of Sullivan County as ordered placed into custody at the Blount County Juvenile Detention Center. Now therefore, being resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Sullivan County Tennessee meeting in record session authorized the Sullivan County Mayor Venable to sign the interlocal agreement to continue provision of juvenile detention services as needed. This is no new money, this is what we've been doing for a very long time. It just puts it in a contractual status to protect our county from any unauthorized or any unforeseen conditions. We've been doing this for a long time. We just want to make it more legal with the contract. This is at the request of our mayor and our county attorney. So I would like to ask for waiver of rules to get this passed to move on with this contract.
You heard the explanation on item number eight. Floor is open for discussion on item number eight. Recognize Commissioner Jones.
Did you not have this last Thursday?
Yes, sir.
So they're coming in asking for two hundred dollars a day plus everything else, emergency medical, dental, routine medical and dental. Have we been doing that?
It's my understanding it's the way it's been done for several years.
Is that county attorney, are you aware of this?
No, I'm surprised.
This, as I recall, it's another one of those that comes in here and asks us to spend money and approve money that we've never seen or heard. Didn't he come to the budget committee to discuss it?
This is at the request of the county attorney, I understand, if mayor.
It's the first time we've ever seen.
I thought it was at the request of the county attorney, so let's put it on first reading and go for it next month.
Sponsor moves first reading on item number eight. That brings us to the end of our resolution calendar. Next order is announcements. Anyone seek recognition for announcements? Commissioner Glover.
Bull riding last Saturday night was a very good success. Our six-year-old granddaughter rode the mutton button and stayed on it the whole time. Her and one more little boy was the only one. So she is, she's looking forward to it, and the next, it's not this coming Saturday night, but the next Saturday. So our, it's a bull house, and I guarantee she'll be there and ride again.
And if you've never been, I suggest, I really enjoy it. Mark Ierson.
Hopefully, you guys kept a copy.
Commissioner Ierson.
At the work session, it was on your desk for the employee's food drive. And I still want to say Chris Davis and Sherri Devault have done a lot of work on this, it's fantastic. They're actually doing it twice a day, from the first to the fifth. They're going to do a collection at all three middle schools in Sullivan County as well. So if you guys can, anything you can do to help them out, there's a QR code to donate cash, there's a way to donate food, but it's really going to help the citizens of Sullivan County. So highly encourage everybody to take a look at that and help if you can. But thank you.
Commissioner Harvey.
I just wanted to encourage everyone to remember, this is the greatest holiday that's coming up, Thanksgiving, and we're so grateful and we're so blessed. So I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone and hope you enjoy it with your friends and family.
Commissioner Cross.
I was very intrigued by Dwight's story about his cousins and their older form, and I was just wondering, when he visited those cousins, how were those beds at Rocky Mount when he visited those cousins?
There was.
Payback.
There was. There was. Commissioner Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Dwight was trying, when that lady said it was going to be office for George Washington looking like, I think Dwight was hoping to be the George Washington looking like that.
Yeah, yeah.
But Travis told me and him both that we weren't tall enough. So anyway, I don't know if Scott Murray's still here or not, and I saw Jim Henry leave, but Highway Department lost an employee a week ago Monday, his name was Clyde Green. And Clyde was at the Highway Department probably, I'd say forty-seven years, one time. Yeah, probably forty-four years, forty-five years. Clyde was about seventy-six, seventy-seven year old, and a week ago Monday, so y'all thank him. He was a good guy, he's a hard worker, he's dedicated to the Highway Department. He was a really good fellow. So y'all thank him back.
Commissioner Jones.
I just want to thank everyone that came out last Monday to, or on the eleventh, for our Veterans Day services with Kingsport and Bristol and here in Blount. Had real good programs. I didn't get to Bristol, but I got to the other two. And I want to thank everyone that came out and supported it. Thank you.
Commissioner Ierson.
Sorry, last thing, and just to give everybody a little bit of a heads up on, not heads up, a feedback. The thing we passed last month, Operation Green Light, a lot of the county offices really jumped on that, the Highway Department jumped on it as well, and we'd be one of the ones that kind of likes. Had a lot of feedback, a lot of good feedback, positive feedback from the community, so we did good. And just want to say, you guys, thank you very much for doing it.
Anyone else seek recognition?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor? That's kind of weak, y'all. Stay in the jury.